Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of Monday, February 3rd, 2020. First off, are there any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Bothwell, resolved that the council meeting minutes of January 21st, 2020 be approved. All in favor? That's carried. And we have two delegations tonight. First up, Mr. Stacy McNeil from 204 Main Street West is going to speak on changing government governance systems. Good evening, Stacy.
Counselors of the town of Grimsby, I'm sure you are aware, I feel, about the way I feel about your decision to move the standing committees, from standing committees to the committee of the whole system. My views were expressed in a letter, in a letter to the editor of News Now, and in my request to speak to you this evening, and in a letter sent to each of you last night. While I would never attempt to claim to speak for the people of Grimsby, I for one am truly disappointed that you have affirmed last meeting's poor decision. I speak to you this evening with a profound sadness. As a new council, you held out a great promise. I've watched you for well over a year now, and I saw your growing pains turn into dysfunction, and watched too many examples of poor decisions being made. At the same time, I've seen you as a council, rudderless, without a C A O until recently. I've seen staff retirements and other human resource changes which may have been beyond your direct control. Some things have not, or have clearly not been your fault, but other things are absolutely your fault. All the while, I bit my tongue. Gavin Muir was my grade 13 calculus teacher. His first response to students who were having problems with the course material was, quote, "Just do the work." Generally speaking, his advice was sound, and it applies to this council. Too often, counselors appear at both standing committees and council meetings ill-prepared. The background material seems to either have not been fully read, or not clearly understood, and no attempt has been made to rectify the situation. Offer, often, proper questions do not seem to be prepared ahead of time. When questioning delegations, counselors frequently ask questions that have previously been asked, and spend time musing with questions which are more comments than questions. These questions often start off with a phrase such as, "Now, I'm just thinking aloud," but that's not the only one. Clearly, many other counselors have had their own ready catchphrases, which seem to play to the camera, instead of clarifying thought or information. Often, questions are asked, and the comments made are not even germane to the subject being discussed. And you wonder why meetings take so long. While my comments do not apply to everyone on council, clearly the ones I'm addressing know whom I'm addressing. Each of you needs to step up your game. Grimsby deserves far better than you've given them thus far. Lately, there's been speculation in the local press, a right-left divide has opened up on council. I'm here to tell you, it doesn't matter which side of the political spectrum you are actually on. What counts in this town is doing good for the people of Grimsby. You all, whether you get along or not, need to use good faith and find ways to negotiate your ways to reasonable solutions. Do what it takes to get there. Now perhaps even a bit of family counseling for this council might be in order.
Counselor Sharp?
The delegation is challenging the decisions and the integrity of council. Is it appropriate? Can I have a ruling on that?
Well, I'm happy to listen. I have an open mind. Mr. McNeil, can you just not, not attack, though?
Okay. Perhaps even a bit of family counseling for this council might be in order. From where I stand, it may be worth the money spent. It definitely would be money well-spent if you guys finally started working as the team you were elected to be. As I said earlier, I'm extremely disappointed with your behavior. Now, you can simply dismiss what I say, and call me an old crank, or you can take this opportunity to do some self-reflection, and some self-improvement, to finally give Grimsby the counsel they'd hoped for in October 2018. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. Any questions further presented? Seeing none, thank you. Our next delegation, oh, sorry, moved by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Sharp, resolved that the delegation of Stacy McNeil with reference to changing government, governance systems be received. All in favor? That's carried. Our next delegation, we have Raj Kehar and Denise Baker from Weir Folds on behalf of C Seigerman and N Patterson. Interim Control Bylaw for Grimsby Beach. Welcome, Raj.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name, as you've heard, is Raj Kahar, and I'm here as counsel for the owners of Lot 22 and Lot 23 on registered plan number 45, municipally known as 33 Victoria Terrace Crescent. We are their council as it relates to their lands, their minor variance application, and their site plan applications. All of those are appealed to the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal. Before you should be our correspondence of today's date that relates to the interim control bylaw that is before you for consideration as item number four and item number seven on your agenda. I'm here on these two items, and I've got a request on behalf of my client of you, and that is to defer consideration of the proposed I C B L to permit our client the opportunity to discuss it with staff, including discussing potentially exempting our client's lots from the I C B L. In the alternative, should council seek to pass this I C B L this evening, I ask you to exempt my client's lots from it. Our client is deeply concerned by this proposed I C B L. It is coming as a total surprise to our client after they have been actively pursuing their minor variance application and site plan applications with the town over the past two years. Applications which staff have commented on, and as it relates to the minor variance application have positively responded to. In particular, our client is concerned that the proposed I C B L, while ostensibly is framed as a bylaw to freeze development in the Grimsby Beach area, to undertake a review, among other things, of O P policies and zoning regulations, this bylaw is in fact intended to freeze development of the lots. Not based on any land use planning ground, but rather in response to public opposition to our client's minor variance and site plan applications. In our view, and for other reasons, the proposed bylaw, if passed, would be in bad faith, discriminatory, and/or illegal. An I C B L is a powerful measure, as this council knows, one that should only be used sparingly and under extenuating circumstances. This proposed I C B L directly impacts our client's lots. In fact, it is solely directed to the redevelopment of our client's lots. Our client got notice of this on Thursday evening. Such short notice, given the gravity of what is before, before them and what is going to potentially impact their lots, is not fair. Our client is asking you to further, to defer this so they can have discussions with staff. Now, I must advise you that if the proposed I C B L is passed without an exemption, as it relates to our client's lots, we will be seeking instructions to proceed with a court application to challenge that bylaw. Now, what I'd like to do with my remaining time is three things. One, provide you some relevant background information as it relates to the application, as well as my client's lots. Second, provide you a number of reasons why this proposed I C B L should not be passed, or at a minimum, my client's lot should be excluded. And finally, if you do decide to pass the bylaw, and agree with me that my client's lot should be exempted, then I'm going to tell you a way that that can be done. So, I've read the staff report. They say the lots are alleged. They exist. They were created by the registration of a plan, T P 45, back in July of 1875. That was prior to the first passing of the Planning Act. That plan is a registered plan of subdivision within the meaning of the Planning Act, and it is interpreted that way because of Section 91 of the Registry, of the Registry Act. Our client has a legal opinion from their real estate council confirming same. That legal opinion was shared with staff back in September of 2018. Our client intends to develop each of the lots with two-and-a-half-story dwellings. Each of these dwellings is going to be compatible with each other and the remainder of the Grimsby Beach area, and be of a similar size and exterior design. They started discussions about these lots with staff back in early 2018. Those discussions started actually around one single dwelling, and it was staff that told my client to confirm whether there were two lots there. That's what triggered them to go out and get real estate council, and once they confirmed that there were two lots, they came up with a proposal for two dwellings, and that discussion's been had since fall of 2018. In July of 2018, in response to those discussions, this council decided to pass a notice of intent to designate, as it relates to my client's properties. My client filed through us an objection to the C R B, the Conservation Review Board, and then ultimately that notice of intention, as I understand, was withdrawn. Staff and our client have worked closely to come up with a predominantly mutually acceptable design for the houses, and as such, our client proceeded to seek the necessary minor variances for Lot 23, which were supported by staff. It's also notable that there are no variances required for Lot 22. But notwithstanding all of that, notwithstanding staff being fine with it, notwithstanding public commenting agencies being fine with it, the committee refused it, I think because of the response from the public, and our client appealed that application to the L P A. They also, of course, filed site plan applications last year, and because no decision was made on them, those were also appealed to the L P A. Now, you need to know that the courts in the L P A have found that interim control bylaws are an extraordinary remedy. They're only supposed to be used in extenuating circumstances, and only where a known event or change detrimental to the public interest, and this is important, likely to occur. And I put to you, that's not likely to occur in this circumstance. In our view, the passing of this proposed I C B L is a political attempt to circumvent planning staff's own professional and written opinions with respect to these lots, and the statutory rights my client has to appeal those Planning Act applications to the L P A. Had council truly been concerned with the policies affecting Grimsby Beach, they would have undertaken a study back in early 2018, back when my client's application and development was known. The staff report explicitly cites the proposed I C B L, is there to implement a framework that could provide staff the tools it currently lacks to assess and properly evaluate the redevelopment proposal. That's what it says. It's targeted to my client's lots, and therefore is discriminatory. Now, if there is a genuine reason behind the proposed I C B L is to pass something for the entire Grimsby Beach area, then exempt my client's lots. Their applications already predate any policy that would come out of those studies that are proposed to be done, and in any event, would not be subject to those policies because of the principles of natural justice. While passing secondary plan policies for the Grimsby Beach area is cited as the urgency and reason for the proposed I C B L, it's noted that that direction's been in the town's O P since 2012. What's happened in the last seven years? Nothing. And it's only when my client has filed a development application that all of a sudden there's a desire to pass new policies and regulations, which again, I say, as it relates to the policies wouldn't apply to my client's lands in any event. There are no other Planning Act applications filed for the Grimsby Beach area that we're aware of. Staff's concern that others have made inquiries regarding filing applications is unfounded. Further, there's no evidence in the staff report of other existing double lots, which are legal lots of records, as is the instance here. In any event, passing an I C B L with an exemption for our client's lands, while it would at the same time allow our client's application to proceed under the policy regime that it was applied under, and that's a very normal thing to happen. It is unusual for policies to apply retroactively, but at the same time, if you do that, if you have a concern with the rest of Grimsby Beach, well, you can stop those. Now, the proposed I C B L is justified through a forthcoming land use planning study. Now, I put to you that that study proposed to, proposes to analyze a number of things that's outside the scope of planning policy, and accordingly, for that reason, that, this I C B L does not comply with Section 38 of the Planning Act. It's illegal. So, we reiterate our request for you to defer consideration of this I C B L to a subsequent council meeting, and allow us to have a conversation with staff about excluding the lots. In the alternative, should you seek to pass it, I think the mechanism to do that, to exclude our client's lands, is to explicitly exclude those lands that are subject to existing Planning Act applications filed on or before the date of the I C B L. Those are my submissions. I'm open to questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kahar. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Bothwell, resolved that the delegation of Raj Kahar with reference to the interim control bylaw for Grimsby Beach be received. All in favor? That's carried.
I just want to apologize. I'm an asthmatic, and I'm having a bit of trouble, so I, I just want to apologize for coughing throughout your presentation and throughout Mr. McNeil's. I'm struggling a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
First up for reports, we have report C A 020-01, Communications Services.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, this is just an information report. No decision will be made. I just wanted to, a number of counselors and a number of staff have said that we've got a big gap in communications. You know, we are trying to do the best we can on the corner of our desks in relation to public safety, in relation to public relations, and, and, you know, make, developing a common brand, in relation to government relations, and in relation to grant funding applications. So what we did is, we just did a little review of similar-sized municipalities in Niagara, and you see that the town of Pelham has committed to Communications Resource back in 2013, Lincoln back in 2016 with two resources and some support staff, and as well, Town of Fortiary and Town of Niagara Lake. So we want to just give you these reference points for us. We'll be putting this in the budget process, and any decisions will be made on this going forward in the budget process. But we wanted to just give you some overview and reference and benchmarks for you to review, and then we'll discuss it more in February 13th in the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, C A O Schlang. Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by, oh, Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'd just like to comment on the report. I always like when we have the comparators in there. It's very important. And all of our, most of all our reports, staff has always been given good repair, good comparators, sorry, which gives us good information, important information, too, when we move forward with the, any of the recommendations. I look forward to discussion at our budget time that we start to get into everything. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. Seeing no further questions, moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve the report CA 020-01 entitled Communications Services dated February 3, 2020 be received. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have Mr. Basic, report PA 20-02, Planning Study and Interim Control Bylaw for Grimsby Beach. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here just to briefly summarize the report that was recently circulated to the council for this agenda tonight, and, which was Report 2002, regarding the Planning Study and Interim Control Bylaw for the Grimsby Beach area. I will briefly summarize some of the background, relevant background information for you, summarize the need for the study, study components, outline the study area. I'll identify the need for an interim control bylaw, or a recommendation why an interim control bylaw would be appropriate in this case, and briefly identify the study process. A number of policies within the town's official plan direct the preparation of design guidelines and cultural heritage policies for Grimsby Beach. The town's Cultural Heritage Landscape Study, which was done in 2015, and Willoughby Conservation Management Plan, which was done in 2017, identify that the Grimsby Beach community is a unique area comprising a pattern of growth, built form, and related natural features, which together set it apart from Grimsby's other neighborhoods. Grimsby Beach consists of many plans of subdivision, and properties that consist of more than one lot in either of Township Plans 45, 45A, 64, and a portion of Lot or Plan 187. In reviewing the 33 Victoria Terrace applications, as well as other development inquiries and pre-consultation requests that have received, that we have received, arisen in the Grimsby Beach area, staff have identified that this existing lot pattern within these subdivisions may result in the potential for multiple lot developments or redevelopments, which could over-intensify and significantly undermine the existing physical character of that community. The recommended study components are as follows. Firstly, we would examine, we recommend examination, examining the planning structure, including the existing subdivision pattern, its existing land use arrangements, and its mix and intensity. Secondly, assess the transportation pattern, including the function of the road network and inventory the associated parking supply. Assess the contributing role and function of Township Plans 45, 45A, 64, and a portion of Plan 187, which is within the area. Update as necessary the existing inventory of built heritage resources associated with the lands that are identified within the study area. Update as necessary and assess the existing mapping of the natural heritage features and other related elements that are valued together for their interrelationship and association with Grimsby Beach. We'd also recommend that we conduct, as necessary, additional public consultations to address potential impacts that were identified in the 2017 Conservation Management Plan. Consideration of architectural design, natural features, and cultural heritage. Update as necessary the Grimsby Official Plan and any new planning policies that would emerge from the land use planning study that we're recommending to implement the secondary plan for the Grimsby Beach area as identified in Schedule D in the official plan. And finally, update as necessary the Grimsby Zoning Bylaw, including any other municipal bylaws, to give effect to any new planning policies emerging from the land use planning study for Grimsby Beach. The plan that you see here is an illustration of the boundary, or the recommended boundary of the Grimsby Beach area, which is identified in Schedule D to the official plan. It's highlighted in yellow with the underlying aerial photography of the area. Plan 45 and 45A are on the upper right-hand corner of that plan. Plan 64 is at the west end of the site, and Plan 45, or Plan 187, is at the southeast corner of the site, Budding Lake Street. Interim Control Bylaw. Staff recommend that an interim control bylaw be passed in order to provide the municipality a pause to complete the land use planning study, and to implement any changes to the official plan and zoning bylaw that may be necessary in order to have the appropriate policy context in place to properly consider the 33 Victoria Terrace redevelopment proposal, as well as any future development proposals within this study area. The interim control bylaw would be for one year, and it can be potentially extended for an additional year by council. Staff recommend that construction of minor structures, such as decks, pools, patios, porches, fences, and temporary buildings and structures, as well as renovations of interiors of existing buildings, be exempt from the interim control bylaw. In order to conduct the study, hiring of a consultant is necessary. Staff estimate that the cost of a consultant for this proposed study will be approximately $100,000. We are currently in deliberations for the town's overall budget for 2020. This will be one of the items that council will have to consider in its budget deliberations. And if council decides not to proceed with hiring a consultant, council will have to consider the repeal of the interim control bylaw. So, in conclusion, staff recommend that council initiate a land use planning study for the Grimsby Beach area, which will examine, among other things, land use patterns, expected levels of growth, the servicing implications of this growth, and what implications this growth may have on the natural, cultural, and heritage fabric of this unique area. Staff also recommend that an interim control bylaw be passed by council for the study area to provide us with a pause to enable the study. This bylaw will provide the town with the necessary time to carry out the proposed land use planning study and to implement any updated policy frameworks for the Grimsby Beach area that may arise from the study. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions anybody from council has regarding my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Basic. Questions? Counselor Frick?
Thank you, Walter. I'll certainly support that particular ICBL. I'm sure we all, before we went to bed last night and woke up this morning, had a bunch of emails about some trees that were destroyed down in that area. Are trees going to be included in the, I get, I don't see them in the exemptions here, but will they be included in the ICBL as protected area until we go through the one year of moratorium?
Overall, the interim control bylaw would prevent development? Not trees. Trees wouldn't be part of the prohibition.
Is this something we can include in the bylaw?
Again, interim control bylaws are principally addressed, or the permission is given to municipalities, to pause development applications and developments on sites, not necessarily the removal of trees.
So, how do we go about protecting the heritage trees that are in the area, which is a big concern? That's my ward. And there has to be some way we can go about doing this. I mean, they are heritage trees, it's a heritage area, and the more trees we cut down, the less heritage of area we have. I mean, it's something we need to address. I'm not sure if this is where we should be talking about this, but I'm just looking for some direction here.
It's one of the components that the study will have to address. The natural heritage features within the site, or within the study area, and it's something that the study may ultimately recommend, that be addressed through various means, like a tree bylaw or other design criteria. But that's something that we would consider through the study to determine what appropriate implementation tools are necessary to implement any policy directives that result from the study.
To the chair. So, that, those, so trees will be included in this? Is that a specific item that will be in there? That's all I want to know. It'll be a specific item that'll be included in this interim bylaw?
Not in the interim control bylaw, but in the study.
But in the study.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Vane?
Just for clarification, Mr. Basics, the property in question that we're talking about, 33 Victoria, backs onto a laneway, is that correct?
33 Victoria Terrace. Victoria Terrace is a land that's not currently used as an open improved right-of-way, public road, per se. It's what many people call a park along the frontage of the Lake Ontario shoreline, between the lots of Plan 45 and Lake Ontario. It's ostensibly used as a park, but Victoria Terrace was identified as a common area within the original plan.
Okay, but we own that piece of land backing onto the property, is that correct?
Our best information is that the town owns the land, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Bothwell?
Just one point of clarification. In the report, on page 32 of the agenda, it talks about the related development activity of concern, and there's a statement that on August 14, 2019, the owner of the property, Grimsby Beach legally described as, appealed the decision of the Town Committee of Adjustment, 33 Victoria Appeal, refusing to grant the following minor variances to permit the demolition of the existing residence and the construction of two, three-story residences thereon. I think that the intent is that, while the Committee of Adjustment, from my understanding, didn't have a role in permitting the demolition of the existing residence, that was handled outside of that process, and perhaps, just for clarification report, that sentence structure is kind of, that piece should be out, because I think it was building and bylaw that is in charge of the demolition.
Just, as long as I get it right, the, yeah, for, as a point of clarification, that particular reference in the report is, if, as an example, if somebody were to build a new house, logically, the existing house would need to be demolished. But, yeah, you're right, the Committee of Adjustment and their decision really doesn't have a specific role, or a legislative role, in determining whether or not a demolition permit should be issued. That's something that's done through the building code.
Counselor Bothwell?
Just, there was a couple of points that I found in the resulting bylaw in this report, that I'm going to bring up when we get actually to the resolutions at the end. There's only just two points for clarification in two sections. On page 45, Section 6.8, just an addition of a small statement about the temporary uses, and on page 43, just to be consistent with wording about inserting after the study to the satisfaction of Town Council. So, it's just two minor little amendments that I'm going to propose once we get to the resolution stage. Other than that, thank you for your comment.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Basic. Seeing no further questions, Counselor Barty?
I'm not quite sure what we can do about this, but I understand there were some trees, I've been getting reports that some of the trees were girdled and then injected with something. And the community has raised some concerns about what may have been injected, because they have certain concerns for animals and people, and of course, so close to the water that it could be some kind of contaminant. So, I'm wondering if we could, if there is a means of better understanding what happened there, so that we can reassure the public?
Through you, Mayor. Public Works Department's checking that out, and we'll report back to council.
Thank you, Counselor Barty. Seeing no further questions, I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Vane. That report PA 20-02 dated February 3, 2020, entitled Planning Study and Interim Control Bylaw for Grimsby Beach be adopted, and that council initiate a land use planning study that will, one, examine the planning structure, including the existing subdivision pattern, its existing land use arrangement, and its mix and intensity of lands identified on Schedule A of Appendix A. Two, assess the transportation pattern, including the function of the road network and inventory, the associated parking supply of the lands identified on Schedule A of Appendix A. Three, assess the contributing role and function of Township Plans 45, 45A, 64, and part of Plan 187 to the lands identified on Schedule A of Appendix A. Four, update as necessary the existing inventory of built heritage resources associated with the lands identified on Schedule A of Appendix A. Five, update as necessary and assess the existing mapping of natural heritage features and other related elements that are valued together for their features, sorry, interrelationship and association with the lands identified on Schedule A or Appendix A. Six, conduct as necessary additional public consultation to address potential impacts identified in the 2017 Conservation Management Plan. Seven, consider architectural design, natural features, and cultural heritage guidelines for the lands identified on Schedule A of Appendix A. Eight, update as necessary the Grimsby Official Plan with any new planning policies emerging from the land use planning study to implement the secondary plan for Grimsby Beach as identified on Schedule D of the official plan on Schedule A of Appendix A. And nine, update as necessary the Grimsby Zoning Bylaw, including any other municipal bylaws, to give effect to any new planning policies emerging from the land use planning study for Grimsby Beach as identified on Schedule D of the official plan, and that the formal tendering process to select consultants to undertake the land use planning study, the consultant be commenced in accordance with the Corporation of Towne Grimsby Bylaw Number 04-119, a bylaw respecting purchasing, and that the necessary funds be allocated in order to complete the land use planning study, and that the consultant selected immediately initiate and complete the land use planning study for the lands identified on Schedule A of Appendix A. And that the interim control bylaw 20-05, as attached as Appendix A, be passed to restrict the use of all lands within the study area to the existing uses only for a period of one year pending the completion of the land use study, and that it be deemed that Section 38 of the Planning Act has been met, and that the town clerk be instructed to prepare the necessary notice adopting the interim control bylaw as contained in Appendix A of Report PA-2002. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have Report DPW 20-01, Draft Site Alteration Bylaw. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here to present a report in support of the new site alteration bylaw, which is being brought forward for council's consideration. As you may remember, back in December, staff brought forward a report with options for council to consider in preparing a new site alteration bylaw, to, sorry, excuse me, to replace the existing version of the site alteration bylaw. From that meeting, staff were directed to go back and review similar bylaws introduced by other municipalities, in particular, the towns of West Lincoln, and prepare a new bylaw for council's consideration. for council's consideration. Following that meeting, staff looked at a number of site alteration bylaws, including West Lincoln's, and we also sat down with staff from West Lincoln to discuss their bylaw and their experiences with administration and enforcement. The bylaw that we're bringing forward is largely based on West Lincoln's existing bylaw, with some adjustments made to meet Grimsby's needs. The report, the report we are presenting to you this evening provides an overview of the bylaw we are proposing for council's consideration. Proposed bylaw uses different thresholds, namely, the amount of material proposed to be moved to establish what level of approval is required. There are two levels of approval in our bylaw. Firstly, director's approval, essentially, the authorization is provided by the Director of Public Works if the provisions of the bylaw are met. And secondly, council approval, essentially, the Director of Public Works brings forward a report for council consideration after the application received and a public consultation process is completed with the neighboring properties. Director approval would be initiated where the amount of material to be moved was roughly five hundred cubic meters, so roughly fifty truckloads or more, or in smaller quantities, depending on the size of the property in question. Council's approval would be initiated where the quantities exceeded a hundred cubic meters or roughly one hundred truckloads. In either case, approval, approval would only be issued if the purpose of the work fell within a specific criteria being, the work is for the purpose of maintaining or improving the agricultural capacity of the property, the work is considered part of a normal farming practice, the work is appropriate for the development use of the land, and that intent and purpose is consistent with the town zoning bylaw and official plan. And lastly, the work meets the intent and purpose of the site alteration bylaw itself. The bylaw also outlines specific timeframes which owners must adhere to. The work would need to be completed within one year of the date of issuance of the permit. If the work did not commence within the first three months of, after issuance, excuse me, the permit would expire. Permits could also be extended up to six months beyond the one-year period, providing a request, request was made at least two months in advance of the expiry, expiration date, sorry. With council's endorsement, before enacting this bylaw, we'd put the proposed bylaw out for a public consultation period. This would provide an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments into the bylaw we are proposing. Following completion of the consultation period, staff would bring a report to council summarizing comments received during this process, along with a copy of the final bylaw for council's consideration. This would allow us to time to complete the process. We're asking to extend the existing site alteration moratorium until the end of May. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Questions from council? Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Through you to Brandon. Thank you for the report, Brandon. Just, the part that I just have a question on is, it's in respect to the road security deposit that we'll be asking for. And I guess the minimum amount for, at five hundred cubic meters is, which would be fifty trucks approximately, is ten thousand dollars. That's the least they have to pay. And I would like to see that our, what we charge is a little bit higher than that. But what I, reading through the, the report which references the hundred trucks, thousand cubic meters, a hundred truckloads, I didn't see anything with regards to a financial charge for, for a security deposit. And if you could just help me out on that, and my own personal comment is, if it's at least ten thousand dollars for fifty trucks, let's double that for, for a hundred trucks. That's just my own personal. So if you could just comment on that, Brandon, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, the question was about the security deposit amount. So in the bylaw right now, what we've proposed is a minimum charge of ten thousand dollars. That would be for security on the road portion only, and that's a minimum charge. So there would be opportunity, we've laid out in the bylaw, that some discretion from the Director of Public Works to, if the route was longer, depending on the time of year, depending on the roads used, we could extend that deposit beyond the ten thousand dollars. Also, there's provisions in the bylaw which talk specifically about securities with respect to the work on the site. So on top of that ten thousand, we could take additional securities which would be held for performance with respect to the site being completed in accordance with the bylaw.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you very much, Brandon. Again, there, there was an amount for the hundred trucks, but that's just my own personal opinion anyways. So at what point does the, the site alteration property owners get their deposit back? And I'm thinking about Kemp Road right now. I've seen there's been some, a little bit of work done, I believe, during the fall, just to reinstate small portions of it, but a lot of that road has been damaged. And so, do we still have the, the securities from the ones that were done at, on Kemp Road? And again, just a quick question, Brandon, at what point in time would we be looking to, you know, either use it all or, or, you know, or, or give the deposit back, a certain amount, whatever? Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there's, when we're speaking specifically to Kemp Road, there is, I believe, one property which is under the existing bylaw, which there is a security deposit in place for. So we can use that, again, to, use it towards ensuring that the road gets fixed properly. One of the other properties, I believe, was, the work was done prior to the bylaws being in place, so obviously, we wouldn't go against that. In terms of the new bylaw, the, the security deposit would be held until such a time that the property has met the satisfaction of, of our department. So there's a list of requirements that they have to do, including a final grading plan, certifying that the works were, have been done in accordance with the approved grading plan. They'd have to top dress the site and make sure that there is vegetation growth as well to prevent from erosion. So there are measures in place to, to make sure that we are satisfied that the work is done in accordance with the plan before we would release that deposit.
Thanks for the clarification.
Counselor Bothwell?
I appreciate the efforts that town staff did to go back and research this more thoroughly and actually investigate West Lincoln and sit with them and come up with this best practices. I think it's, I'm very happy to see, because the other model was the City of Ottawa model. I'm very happy to see it, a maiden Grimsby and a regional focus that is relevant to the concerns that we have here, and it addresses most of them from what I can see. Very, very pleased with the work done. I think it's excellent. I'm also pleased to see that the, the public engagement component, when there's over a thousand cubic meters of soil, public engagement and council approval required for that. That's about it. I just, I'm just, I'm looking forward to the public engagement that we have when this, when the model goes out. Thank you.
Counselor Dunson?
Thank you. Through you to our presenter. When I was reading through this, I got the feel that once we put this in place after it goes to the public for their input and we, comes back to council and we endorse this and it becomes our new site alteration bylaw, I get the impression it's going to take a lot more staffing to do this. We got a sense of, it sounds a little labor intensified because it's real, it's a really, it's a really tight site plan alteration bylaw. So have we got any thoughts on budgeting and all those things that we, because this will happen this year. Just curious if you could let us know.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we're not entirely sure what the total impact will be. It's really dependent on the number of applications we receive. That being said, in our discussions with West Lincoln, they did inform us that their bylaw enforcement officer, fifty percent of his time is dedicated solely to, to bylaw enforcement. So when we look at our, our existing bylaw officer, we have currently one, he's dealing with roughly a hundred and sixty applications per year, applications or complaints or concerns, and approximately forty-two orders. If we saw a similar impact with his timing, obviously, that level of service would be reduced. So we don't know at this time, but we will certainly bring it back to council if we feel that we're being, our resources are being stretched too thin.
Thank you. Yeah, West Lincoln has a little more land to cover than we do, so that would indicate that they're going to be busier than we are, and we don't know how many applications, as you say, so, but it's something we need to be cognizant of going forward, that it could impact us financially too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Vardy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Section Twenty-six C, when you talk about informing people within a hundred and twenty meters of the property, I'm wondering if, if there's some way to increase that because, you know, basically, the truck traffic involves everybody along the route, so I wonder if that's not a change that we could, could make. And then in Section Thirty-one F, you talk about any dust measures. Why not just, I'd like to see the any deleted and just say dust measures will be put in place.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just I'll talk to the first one. It was Twenty-seven C, you said?
Twenty-six C.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not entirely sure where the hundred and twenty meters came from with respect to that, that boundary, but there's certainly, we can look at increasing that impact. I think what we are trying to avoid is, you know, the, the primary focus, I guess our concerns would be to the neighboring landowners with respect to impact to drainage and, and, you know, of that sort, so, but we can certainly look at expanding that beyond the hundred and twenty meters. And your second question was with respect to...
Thirty-one F.
Okay, and I think that looks like it may be a typo, so we would look at changing that as well.
And just to follow up, you have something in here about hours of operation?
Well, in terms of hours of operation, there's a number of things that you can consider. One of them is existing noise control bylaw. So right now, the noise control bylaw establishes, I believe it's seven AM to seven PM working hours, Monday to Friday, with provisions on Saturdays and no work on Sundays.
So can, is it possible to restrict Phil going on the weekends?
It's something I can certainly look at and get back to you on.
Okay, I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I just want to thank you, Brandon, and I'm very happy that you reached out to West Lincoln to make a West Niagara solution. And just very happy that we've come full circle in getting this done. Thank you very much. Moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Bothwell, resolve that Report DPW twenty dash zero-one dated February third, twenty twenty regarding the draft site alteration bylaw be received and the draft bylaw be put forward for public consideration and the moratorium on site alteration permits be extended until May thirty-first, twenty twenty to allow for public consultation and dissemination to council for additional consideration. All in favor? Up next, we have HR twenty dash zero-three, Council Compensation Part Two. Welcome, Kat Bohr.
In the last meeting of council, we discussed the town's compensation philosophy, the council-specific compensation strategy, and the methodology that we would be using for this review of council remuneration or council compensation. Just as a reminder, the last time a review of council compensation was done was well over five years ago, and like staff salary reviews, should be done at least once every five years or once every term of council. In light of that, we launched a survey to the eleven municipalities in the Niagara region and the region of Niagara to obtain information about the council-based salaries, benefits, Omer's pension, compensation for boards and committees, as well as other compensations such as expenses and per diems. I'm pleased to report that the participation rate was a hundred percent, so we obtained participation from everyone who was surveyed. As we discussed in the last meeting, a median is used to compare town of Grimsby salaries against the comparator market that was identified. That's in accordance with Compensation Review Best Practices. Based on the information that was provided, the median salary of the mayor was thirty-eight thousand, five seventy-seven. That's the municipalities in the Niagara region, eight of them, that have a population of about thirty thousand or less, and forty thousand, two twenty-four for the whole region of Niagara, plus the region, not including full-time mayors. The median salary of a counselor was fifteen thousand, two forty-eight to seventeen thousand, four hundred respectively. Most of the municipalities' counselors are entitled in health, or sorry, enrolled in healthcare benefits, and many are enrolled in Omer's, where the town of Grimsby council is not currently enrolled in benefits. Several also reported other compensation, including per meeting rates, per committee meeting rates, council, or sorry, committee chair special rates, cellphone for either the mayor or counselors, of course, group benefits and Omer's, a car allowance for the mayor ranging from twenty-four hundred per year to over, just over twenty thousand dollars per year. One reported a compensation of sixty dollars per day for attending conferences for lost wages, and a number of them, three of them, reported some compensation for hydro boards, seventy-five hundred to ten thousand per annum, twenty-five hundred per annum plus three thousand per meeting, and one reported no compensation for hydro boards. So that's the, the data that was collected is provided in a bit more detail in the report that you should have a copy of. So at this point, are there any, are there any questions about the information?
Counselor Bothwell?
So salary-wise, we're above the median and we're comparable?
Base salary-wise, we are above the median. We're looking at the comparator market being either ten percent above or ten percent below what's identified as the median, and that's considered to be within market. So being above that median means that we're competitive with market on the base salary.
Seeing no further questions, moved by Counselor Frack, seconded by Counselor Sharp, resolve that Report HR twenty dash zero-three with reference to Council Compensation Part Two be received. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Kat. Up next, we have resolution, whistleblowing policy requested by Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Bothwell, would you like to comment on that? Or would you like me to read it first? All right, perfect. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Vane, whereas council approved HR twenty dash zero-one Employee Code of Conduct on January twenty-first, twenty twenty, and whereas the Code of Conduct incorporates the whistleblower policy and embeds it within the Code of Conduct, and whereas the motion requesting the staff prepare a whistleblower policy was carried by council on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, with the intent that it be a standalone policy, and that only mechanisms for reporting noncompliance of the code is through the Office of Human Resources or the CAO, and that employee code of conduct be amended to remove the whistleblower policy and create it as a standalone policy, and that the noncompliance whistleblowing procedure be amended, include, and included the option and procedure for anonymous reporting. That the noncompliance whistleblowing procedure be amended to include an option for an employee or council to request a third-party expert to assist or undertake investigations where deemed appropriate, and that staff report back to council with amendments to the policies as noted above for council review and consideration. Comments? Counselor Vane?
Just...
Um, just a question of curiosity. Why is this coming through as a resolution, not a notice of motion? We haven't had an opportunity to discuss this or, and again, we're just being thrown at us.
Sarah?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There was a resolution previously asking for a standalone whistleblowing policy. Staff brought a employee code of conduct that included the whistleblowing policy. So this item was already discussed previously, so it's coming as a resolution.
Counselor Vane?
Does this require two-thirds vote or just a majority? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like that resolution. I think it's a lot of merit. And having a third party as being the focus of hearing any kind of whistleblower complaints, concerns, issues, and so on and so forth, I think is, but most of the industries outside of municipalities do anyway. I think most municipalities do that, the federal government does that. I think we should seriously consider that particular resolution. And pulling it out of the code of conduct policy, I think is also, gives it more credence. And I think that's really important in this world where whistleblowers are not protected. I think we need to do that. I think we need to pull that out and let it stand alone. That's my opinion, and I'll go with that resolution.
Counselor Sharp?
Through the mayor, or to whoever made the report, I'm sorry. Who will the third party be?
Through you, Mayor. I think this resolution passes. Kat will provide a report back to council explaining the process.
Counselor Sharp?
So, our integrity commissioner from ADR, I think is the name of the company, would they be appropriate? And if they are, how much does it cost? Do we already have a standing agreement with them for, for an hourly rate?
I think that'll all be answered in the report when it's come back. Counselor Dunstall?
So who decides when we use a third party? When, when, you know, what's the mechanism there?
Counselor Bothwell?
The intent of the resolution is just to bring it back to council and to have the suggested amendments to the policy, which is removing the whistleblower, putting in some draft wording, and to have the wording come back to council for this type of discussion. At this point, the resolution is just to, to ensure that we have an opportunity to have some further conversation on it. And the intent is to do that. So it's to pull the whistleblower as a standalone, add some draft language on anonymous reporting and third-party participation in an investigation, and then expecting that staff will report back to us and we'll have a fulsome discussion on an amended code.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Dunstall?
If we were to do that, then could we look at what other municipalities are doing in our area to see if this is something they felt necessary to do? Or a comparative to see where we're at?
Yep, that sounds good. All right, see, Counselor Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that we should go beyond the local municipalities and look at industry standard, a little broader, maybe across Ontario, across Canada, industries, municipalities, federal governments. I don't think we should limit it to just the local area. We don't know whether they're doing best practice right now. So let's, let's try, I guess I'm directing this to staff. Maybe when we do this survey, we look a little further than beyond the local municipalities. Because whistleblower policies are not something that has been advanced too much in the last number of years. So I think we're kind of getting into new territory as well. So let's, let's look at best practice across, outside of the region. That's my suggestion anyways. Thank you.
Counselor Vardy?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say, it's really important that, you know, if, if you have, only have internal reporting, you know, you're policing yourselves. And that's never a good thing. So it's always good to have a neutral outsider being able to, to weigh in and do any kind of investigation if necessary that, that you know is completely free of bias. So I would say that's the, the best practice. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Do we have any idea of approximate cost if we're going to go outside to, with this procedure and policy?
Well, I kind of, I think that the report will certainly give us some information about costs. Seeing no further questions, Counselor? All right, I just feel best, best practice, industry best practice is definitely the way to go. We want to have this whistleblower policy. And we want to do it right, so it's the best we can have. So I read the resolution moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Vane. All in favor? That's carried. Next up, we have the resolution and live-streaming of meetings requested by Counselor Bothwell. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Vane. Resolve that all standing committee and budget committee of the whole meetings be livestreamed. All in favor? Oh, discussion, Counselor Vane?
This particular idea was brought up to the Parks and Recreation Committee. And the lay members made it very clear they were not comfortable with this. If we try to impose it on them, or if we tell them they cannot be involved, if they refuse to do it, we're setting ourselves up for potential litigation for a two-month period. I'm going to recommend that we leave this until such time as we go to committee of the whole. Otherwise, we're going to have to approach our lay members and get waivers signed and/or get new lay members all for a two-month period. It's, I think the motion's a little premature. So, and that's based on discussion I've had with the actual lay members.
Counselor Bothwell?
I'm not sure from a procedural perspective that when a lay member signed up to become members of committees that they fall under any procedural guidelines that council invokes. Now, if live-streaming is one of them, that that would be something that they would be mandated to have to, to follow. And it is, I understand it is only pending committee of the whole a month or two. I'll leave it to council's wish. But I was hopeful that, considering that we have that ability to do it, and it has been well-received, that we do start to move towards full-standing committees and live-streaming. If that's not supported by council, I would still ask that the part of my motion requesting that the budget committees be livestreamed be, be included, if it has to be split that way. Thank you.
Take the standing committee part out and amend it, please. And then we can vote on that. Or we can vote on the whole motion, whichever. But I would ask for an amendment to remove the standing committee part. I, I think the potential for, for litigation and other things is too high. It is such a waste, just for two months, for standing committees.
Counselor Vardy?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Considering that these meetings are already public, I can see why, I can understand why there would be any resistance to allowing the public greater access. They're already public meetings. So I would favor the motion as put forward.
Counselor Bothwell, do you want a friendly amendment? I'm quite happy to vote on them separately. I don't have a problem with that, so.
If, yeah, if we want to separate them, I'm, I'm happy with that. I, I would hope that we can support both standing committees as the first portion and then budget committees. But I, I would be amenable to separating those into two motions.
All right, I'll separate them out. We'll just have the same mover and seconder if they agree to that. So I'll read the nine, the first motion. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Vane. Resolve that, that all standing committee meetings be livestreamed. And then we'll vote on that one. All in favor? Two, three, I'll break the tie and vote in favor. And so that's carried. And moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Vane. Resolve that budget committee of the whole be livestreamed. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have notice of motions. As per the request of the mover, the notice of motions for the following business items have been withdrawn. Bylaw enforcement support, RFP parking enforcement, donations of funds, and status update on outstanding closed-session items. They will be reintroduced at a subsequent next council meeting. Thank you. Moved by Counselor Frick, seconded by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that GDAC meeting minutes of January 15, 2020 be received and filed. Counselor Cadwell, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Our meeting was on January 15. We had quorum. Meeting was called the order to order at 8:30. There were no pecuniary interests. We reviewed the, we accepted the minutes from the December 18 GDAC meeting. We had a roundtable discussion at, at our meeting on the 15th about the, the meeting, again, as I mentioned last council meeting, briefing the, good discussion about how everybody enjoyed the, the economic roundtable discussion we had. Bit of a short meeting. And also reports. We had a report from Ms. Sweeney noted that the funding for the Welcome Center was approved until April of 2020. She stated that previously, the funding for the Welcome Center had come from a reserve fund which has now been depleted. Any further funding would have to come from the general levy. The committee had discussion about the Welcome Center and whether or not tourism should be a focus of the municipality. And so a resolution was brought forward by, by committee members saying resolve that the Grimsby Economic Development Committee does not see the Welcome Center as a priority for economic development. And that was, that was carried. Committee members suggested that for budgeting for conferences and attendance at events for educational network purposes also be included in our budget discussions. We had correspondence from the Ontario Takes Action. A good discussion about the skilled trades and that. And pretty much everybody's aware of the lack of, of people we have for skilled trades right now. So that's pretty much across the country. We had, again, a good discussion on that. Under new business, the business incubators, what are they composed of? Ms. Nancy Simon gave a presentation which outlined the background, information on the business incubators. Again, it was a great presentation, as I mentioned at the last council meeting. And a lot of good discussion was, was circled around that presentation. We, two members brought forth the resolution. Resolve that the Grimsby Economic Development Advisory Committee form a working group to explore business incubators in Grimsby for the meeting of this month, which I believe is the 19th, third Wednesday of the month, anyway. So, yeah, that, that, again, we're looking forward to getting a, a working group together and getting into the business incubators for Grimsby. That was pretty well it from our meeting. Our next meeting is February 19th of this month. And if anybody, our meetings are open too, are open to the public, councillors. So they're 8:30 in the morning, so they're early. But we welcome, I think, just give me a second here. Yep, okay, that's it for that report. Thank you.
Could I just have a clarification on the one you read about tourism? You said that GDAC doesn't support tourism? Is that important?
Yeah, what the committee thought was for the investment we have at the, at the Gateway, the tourism aspect of what Grimsby has to offer in tourism. I mean, we do have some, some great events in that. That was all discussed, what we have, what we do have in Grimsby. But the committee just didn't think that for the, the money that is invested at this time for the kiosks at the Gateway is, has been, has worked very, you know, very well for us. And again, the tourism aspect of it, they just, they didn't see that, that panning out, so to speak. But Mr. Purdy and Sarah Sweeney have been working, again, on, on some good, good options at the, for the Gateway. And I believe that Sarah will be bringing the option to council for budgeting to, for, for having a presence at the Gateway. So it's, it's a good option. I was very impressed with it. So anyways, at our budget process, you'll all hear the, the next option we have on the table.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell, for the clarification. And just, just as Grimsby being the gateway to Niagara, and the Welcome Center is kind of near and dear to me because I was on the Niagara Region Tourist Council when we actually got that building built way back when. So it is, tourism, I think, is an important aspect of our community. And I do feel it has a place, maybe not in Grimsby's economic development, but it certainly has a place in the municipality. Thank you. Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, Your Worship. I had the opportunity to attend that meeting. And of course, when they decided not to support the Gateway, I kind of took it personally. I, as yourself, you were on the Niagara tourism component or whatever it was. When you, when it was built, I was the chamber president when the chamber was there at the horseshoe. And the town, for the first 10 years of the Gateway being there, supported it to the tune of $40,000 a year for 10 years. And we're asking for what I think is a very minimal amount of money. When I was the chamber president, there was 1.3 million visitors a year going through the Gateway. I just got a report from JED, who is the property management company that look after the Gateway. And the stats are 2.7 million visitors go through the center a year now. So it has doubled in the last 10 years. And there's 44 million vehicles now going along the QEW. And when you enter the building above the horseshoe, it says Niagara Gateway. But it's Grimsby real estate that these folks are walking into. And wouldn't it be nice if every time somebody came into that center, that tourism center? And by the way, they distributed 250,000 brochures last year. That's brochures. This isn't digital stuff on phones. It's physical brochures. And they said, hello, welcome to Grimsby. Because most of these people, these 2.7 million people, have no idea where the boundaries of Grimsby are and would probably not even know that they're in Grimsby. And what an opportunity we have to greet people who are coming into our town to the gateway to Niagara. Let's remember, the second biggest economic driver in, in, in the Niagara region is tourism. The number one is healthcare, of course, because we're all getting old and tired. And I'm getting tired of talking about the gateway. It goes on and on. But I'm a huge supporter of it. It is very effective. And we seem to turn our backs on the gateway and tourism when we're right on the border. And so I was very disappointed that people don't see it as an economic driver to grow our community. It just boggles my mind. So I don't know what else to tell you. But I was very disappointed that these people on this committee don't see the value of having... on this committee don't see the value of having strong representation. And that's the problem. We don't have strong representation. In fact, the general manager, Brian Purdy, has said he had difficulty sometimes getting brochures out of Grimsby. And I think, ugh, we're not even trying to get them in that gateway to get people to come into our town. I can pound the desk all night and it hasn't done a whole lot of good, but I'm just really disappointed. And I hope Sarah Sweeney has some good alternatives because I, I just, it's sad to see.
Councillor Cadwell, then councillor Vane.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your comments, councillor Dunstall. I've been, I've been on this ride as long as you have too. And I totally agree with your comments in that. The challenge that we had, that the committee, that we're looking at a lot of different issues that have been there. And I'll tell you, thank goodness for Mr. Purdy, was he got six summer students. Because we just don't have the staff. We had, we had the key, we have the kiosks there until the end of April. But the challenge for, for the town of Grimsby, and it's just putting staff out there. We tried to get volunteers and we didn't get any volunteers. And again, we, we had the summer students and they did a great job. They really did. Because Brian gave us a, a statistics report. If you remember, I presented it a few, a couple of months ago, or maybe two, three months ago. Anyways, just the, all these subjects of questions that were being brought, people were asking about Grimsby. And it was great. It was a great report. But again, not to sound like a broken record here, but staffing was, was the main, like I said, we weren't able to do it. So the committee just felt, from an investment standpoint, we weren't getting the best out of that, that money at the gateway for that. But again, Mr. Purdy has come up with another very good option. It's going to involve having brochures there, councillor Dunstall, the usage of the videos up there for our, to, you know, showcase Grimsby while, while people are eating their lunch or whatever. There's a lot, there's a lot of TV screens around that. And again, so there is an opportunity for us, and I totally agree, we, we have to be there in, in some form. And that's the right thing to do, I think too. With, again, councillor, as you mentioned, the numbers have doubled in that. So anyways, yeah, it's a good option coming forward. And I don't have all the information, I apologize. But Sarah Sweeney will be bringing that forward at budget time. So I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Councillor Vane?
Just to add to what's already been said, which I think is pretty much right on the money, I had a neighbor come to my house one day and drop me off about 10 brochures, Oakville, Burlington, Niagara on the Lake, Niagara Falls, everything but Grimsby. So I do totally agree. I think we're being very short sighted by not considering, if GDAC committee doesn't want to be it, then maybe they should become part of the committee of the whole. I don't know if we can't, it's just not the right thing. We're trying to promote this town more and more all the time, and then yet we're turning around and saying, we don't want to consider tourism? That's what people come to Niagara for. We have wineries, we have excellent restaurants, we have festivals, we have all kinds of stuff. Why are these people not wearing shirts saying, welcome to Grimsby? Why do we not have maps right in there as soon as you walk through the door? Here's a map of Grimsby. Here's, we, we're spending $12,000 on a wayfinding sign, yet we're not even telling people what we have? They've got to drive through our streets to find it? Well, the odds are they'll get back on the QEW. So I really think we need to really seriously reconsider the makeup of the GDAC committee. And we do need to get some brochures in there. Because when my neighbor hands me 10 for towns, everything but Grimsby, and he searched the whole bin, not one thing. I heard there was one for Grimsby charges, that was it. Thank you.
The CAO is going to clarify?
Yeah, I just, to Mayor, I just want to clarify, GDAC felt it's still important, but it's, it's not really, it should be their focus in economic development. Because the form that we had prior to that with Bob Sagan and the head of Economic Development in Pelham and Niagara Region were saying, it's two different skill sets. You know, if you really want to promote economic development, that's, you know, business retention, business expansion. It's just a little different than the tourism component. They didn't say it wasn't important, they just felt as a GDAC committee focusing on ec dev, they wouldn't prioritize this. We've then taken that and worked with Sarah Sweeney, and in the budget you'll see some components that we still want a presence in the gateway.
All right, I'll read the resolution again. Moved by councillor Frick, second by councillor Bothwell, resolve that the GDAC meeting minutes of January 15th, 2020 be received and filed. All in favor? That's carried. Next correspondence up is the First North Grimsby Scouting Group, request to declare Scout Guide Week, February 17th to 23rd, 2020. Moved by councillor Sharp, second by councillor Frick, resolve that the correspondence from First North Grimsby Scouting Group regarding a request to declare Scout Guide Week, February 17th to 23rd, 2020 be received and approved. All in favor? That's carried. Next correspondence is the Kinsman Club of Grimsby, 100th anniversary request to declare Kin Canada Day and Week, February 16th to 22nd, 2020. Moved by councillor Vane, second by councillor Sharp, resolve that the correspondence from the Kinsman Club of Grimsby with reference to the 100th anniversary of the club and a request to declare Kin Canada Day and Week, February 16th to 22nd, 2020 be received and approved. Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, I apologize, Mayor Jordan. I just, if I may, could I just do a brief comment on that? The information was handed to me and, and thank you, Sarah, for putting this in our agenda. Yeah, the, this is a big, big, big number for the Kinsmen, for the, the club that's been in town for so, so long. Like, I'm sure everybody read through the report, they have done so many things for Grimsby. It's, it's amazing. I remember when they built the, built the West Pat back around 93, when they were selling the bricks for, for $25, I believe it was, and to, to try to raise money in that. That was a great project that they did. Their mini put, it's, I believe it was 1996, so this is the 25th year, somewhere around the 25th year that they're doing their mini put. And I'd just like to give a bit of a plug, that'll be held on Sunday, March the 8th. It's, I think most of us were in it last year. We had a great time. Registration is coming up soon. It'll all be on the, in the newspapers and that. So Mr. Bruce Bond has mentioned to me, is tell people, you know what, register early because it fills up really quick. But they've done a, they've done so much work for the West Lincoln Memorial Hospital fundraising too. So anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Cadwell. I read the resolution. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have resolutions from other municipalities. City of Niagara Falls homelessness and Town of Lincoln support for Ontario wine and beer in retail stores as part of modernizing alcohol sales. Moved by councillor Frick, second by councillor Bothwell, resolve that resolutions from other municipalities be received. All in favor? That's carried. All right, we're moving to the bylaws portion. Councillor Bothwell?
Just further to my comment regarding the interim control bylaw report for, previously in the agenda, there's just two items within the bylaw, I might have said resolution earlier in my, in my notes, but it's, with regards to this bylaw 2005, which is coming up for first reading, second and third reading, two minor amendments that I'm hoping that we can incorporate into the bylaw, page 43, where it states, and this is only a consistency statement. It says, and that interim control bylaw 2005 as attached as appendix A be passed to restrict the use of all lands within the study area to the existing uses only for a period of one year pending the completion of the land use study. Following that, end of that statement, we insert after study to the satisfaction of town council. That's consistent wording further in the bylaw. So my request is to add to the satisfaction of town council following that paragraph. And the second is page 45, 6B, so 6B of the bylaw, to replace, be permitted to construct, alter, or expand any building or structure save and accept where such construction is that of a minor structure such as decks, pools, patios, porches, fences, and temporary buildings and structures with be permitted to construct, alter, or expand any building or structure save and accept where such construction is that of a minor nature such as decks, pools, patios, porches, fences, and temporary buildings and structures as defined in the Town Zoning bylaw 1445, section 4.3 temporary uses to provide, that's to provide clarity as to the definition of, of temporary uses. So my motion, my request is to add those two amendments to the bylaw.
All right, so we'll lift that bylaw. So. We just need a secondair to lift that bylaw first. Councillor Vardy? Moved by councillor Bothwell, second by councillor Vardy, resolve that bylaw 20-05 be lifted for separate consideration. All in favor? That's carried. Now we need a sector, a secondair for the amended bylaw. Councillor Vane? Moved by councillor Bothwell, second by councillor Vane, resolve that bylaw 20-05 be amended to include, and that interim control bylaw 20-05 as attached as appendix A be passed to restrict the use of all lands within the study area to the existing uses only for a period of one year pending completion of the land use study to the satisfaction of council. And page 45, 6B, replace, be permitted to construct, alter, or expand any building or structure save and accept where such construction is that of a minor structure such as decks, pools, patios, porches, fences, and temporary buildings and structures with be permitted to construct, alter, or expand any building or structure save and accept where such construction is that of a minor structure such as decks, pools, patios, porches, fences, and temporary buildings and structures as defined in the Town ZBL 14, or zoning bylaw 14-45, section 4.3 temporary uses. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by councillor Vane, second by councillor Frick, resolve leave be given to introduce bylaws 20-04, 20-06, 20-07, 20-08 be read a first time. All in favor? That's carried. Oh, 20-05 is included in that as well. Up, up next, we have new business. Councillor Vane?
I just want to let everybody know that FORT, the teenagers' group, is having a fundraiser party this week at the Forti Public House on Friday night at 6:30. It starts.
Councillor Sharp?
Thanks. I have two announcements. One is, one of the correspondents we, we carried was the Scout Week from the 17th to 23rd. I just want to remind people that are watching and councillors that on the 23rd, at the end of Scout Week, First North Grimsby Scouting is hosting a free skating at the Peach King Centre from 3:00 to 4:30. That's Sunday, February 23rd. I go out, I bring my kids. It's fun, it's nice to get some skating in, save yourself the three bucks. And usually they have Timbits. Hint, hint to the First Niagara. The other announcement I have is on the 17th of February, which is Family Day, that's Monday, February 17th, there is a winter tree walk up at the Beamer Conservation Area on the mountain. It's from 10 to 12. You can go up there. I think our very own Bruce McKenzie will be hosting a, an event, kid friendly, take your kids, bring some gloves, walk through, look at the trees without leaves on them. Anyhow, that's just something to consider on Family Day, that's February 17th, and on Sunday, February 23rd, free skating.
Councillor Bothwell?
Councillor Vardy, can I say something about what's coming up in March at the Art Gallery? Or would you like to?
Go right ahead, Dorothy.
We have a lot of fun there. And the Art Gallery is hosting their auction and fundraising event on Saturday, March the 28th. So just, this is just a plug, I'm sure councillor Vardy will give you much more details as we get closer, but they sold out very quickly last year. And we had a lot of fun last year with the peace, love, Woodstock theme. And this year's theme is Beatles. So I'm just going to encourage everybody to set that data side for the Art Gallery's major fundraiser for that night and watch for more details and check the website out. And if you want your ticket, you better get them soon because we're going to hog them all up.
Thank you, councillor Bothwell. Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just to give you a calls, notes, versions of our West Lincoln Memorial Hospital advisory meeting, which was held on January the 23rd. Mr. Aaron Levo spoke about the goals of HHS, there was short term, medium, and long term. The short term is the meet, meet the infection control within the hospital. The, the medium term is government approval and funding. And the long term is shovel in the ground. Timeframe not, there wasn't announced anything like that, but obviously they're, they're, they're very, they're moving very proactive and forward with the shovel in the ground. We, just a little refresher here, we, the, the whole process received at stage two, to move, to proceed to stage two, was received on December 19th of 2019. Let's see. And then they just commented briefly about stage three, which, which they mentioned, stage three involves Infrastructure Ontario, funding, RFP for setup contractors. It is saying that stage three will be the longest stage, probably looking, looking long term, that's the longest one. The goals, fall of '22, there'll be two ORs that meet infection control standards. So they're, they're, what they're saying was the volume should be coming back with regards to, to people coming back to West Lincoln Memorial Hospital and also the return of the obstetrics in the fall of '20. And the great news was, they're going to come out with a, from a communication standpoint, they're coming out with a monthly newsletter, an update. So I look forward to seeing that. It'll be, it'll be a handout at the hospital and also it'll be, I believe it'll be also maybe be in the local newspapers too. So, yeah, that was pretty much the, the meeting agenda, so thank you.
Seeing no further new business, I have a couple of items myself. One of them piggybacks on councillor Cadwell's hospital information. The West Niagara mayors have been meeting pretty well, almost monthly, trying to move the hospital forward, liaising with Hamilton Health Sciences and the province. And so we were just given the actual requirements that are going to be, are provided by the Ministry of Health about the size of the new hospital. It's going to be maximum of 119,705 square feet. It's about 30% larger than the existing hospital right now. It's going to cost quite a bit. The estimated budget is somewhere around the 200 million mark. It's going to include 56 patient beds plus eight nurse It's going to include 56 patient beds plus eight nursery bassinets and five labour birthing and recovery suites, which we're quite excited about with the obstetrics program that is very popular at West Lincoln. It's going to also acute, include acute inpatient services, emergency department, ambulatory servants, services, complex continuing care, maternal and newborn services, day surgical services and endoscopy. And also with that, the anchor is 24-hour emergency care, maternal newborn obstetric section, community surgery featuring innovative day surgery model with four surgical suites including endoscopy and minor procedures. So that's an increase of two surgical suites. Focus on community medicine, focus on healthy aging and seniors care, specialty clinics including general internal medicine, rapid assessment clinic and subspecialty clinics, advanced diagnostics including x-ray, mammography, endocardography, ultrasound and CT scan. And additional features to be built on the same property behind the existing facility. Again, I said it's larger 30, by 30%. And focus on modern approaches to care and complement current standards, including patient and family centered care, senior friendly design principles, infection prevention and control, 80% single patient rooms in the hospital, accessibility. It's going to be up to accessible standards, provincial standards for space, including patient rooms, emergency department and operating room suites, and expanded clinic space to bring specialty consultant services closer to West Niagara. So it's very exciting. And as Councillor Cadwell said, we're moving through stage two to get to stage three. And we will be pushing both Hamilton Health Sciences and the province to work together to, to move this forward as fast as we can. So it's very good news. And the other thing we have coming up is the Town of Grimsby wants to defend their Mayor's Cup yet again. That's coming up February 7th and 8th. We are the current champions. That's in Port Colburn. Grimsby's first game is Friday at 9:30 and then Saturday, February 8th at 9 and 11 a.m. So I guess our CAO is even going to take a couple of face-offs. He's signed up. I think they are just going to give him limited ice time, but, but we're looking forward to continuing, or defending our champion. Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Sorry, just going to mention that you and I attended the, the infrastructure announcement at the Rees Bridge in West Lincoln on Wednesday, right after the council meeting. And that was really good news that through MPP Sam Osterhoff, we got 1.1 million plus dollars for infrastructure moving forward. So that was great, great news. Thank you.
Thanks for, thank you for reminding me on that one. Moved by Councillor Frack, second by Councillor Vane. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaws 20-04 to 20-08 inclusive, read a first time, now be read a second and third time and finally passed. And that the mayor and town clerk do sign and seal the same and the rule of council to the contrary notwithstanding. All in favor? The next meeting of council is scheduled for Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. That's Tuesday because of Family Day on February 17th, where we have the free skate.
No, February 18th is the winter tree walk.
Oh, the winter tree walking at Beamer, sorry.
Nice.
All right, I got it. And that'll be at 7:00 p.m. right here. So meeting is adjourned. Thank you.